We call this Altoona City Council Meeting to Order, Monday, November 13th at 6:00 PM. We will now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you take the rule call, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilman Cooper.
Here.
Councilman Ellis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here.
We'll now open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under five minutes. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Katie.
My name's Katie. I live in the city of Altoona. Many of you know me, some of you do not. I'm not a public speaker, so I am very nervous. But I want to start by saying that I respect all of you, and I think you all believe that what you're doing is right for the city. But I stand here today to discuss the Keith Athletic Field. I live in the neighborhood of Keith Athletic Field, and I understand that the field is owned by the city, I mean, by the school district. But there are clearly conversations being had behind closed doors based on an article that was printed, several articles that were printed in the Altoona Mirror. And in one of the articles, it states that the Redevelopment Authority hopes to obtain the field for housing development. Most of you, or a representative from you, have knocked on my door asking for my support in your campaigns. But none of you have knocked on my door to ask me how I feel about this, the potential for a housing development, or my neighbors for that fact. We, as a community, are asking to have input and transparency. There are many rumors swirling regarding the sale and what the city plans to do with it should they obtain it. I've heard everything from keeping it a green space, higher-end townhomes, and low-income townhousing, or affordable townhouse, affordable housing. There are many potential possibilities, but if any of you would like to clarify the rumors, we welcome the conversation. This past year, there were many conversations about Prospect Pool and how it is a staple in the community. It needed to many upgrades, but the city was willing and did fight for that area. You put money into it, you kept it recreational, you improved the atmosphere, and ultimately, people were very happy with it. I don't understand why the same enthusiasm can't go into Keith Athletic Field. We don't have many green spaces in Altoona, and this one is also a staple in the community, and it has been for decades. Despite what people say it is used daily by the community. I have read through various newspaper articles, viewed the city's comprehensive plan, and all of you have stated that you want to increase the housing/tax base for the city, but at what cost? I feel as though developing this land could have many unintended consequences. First and foremost, our concern is for safety. We worked hard to be able to afford a home in a safe, quiet neighborhood for our children to grow up in. Personally, I have four children. They're the loudest ones in the neighborhood, but it is, so it's quiet other than them. When you introduce certain types of housing, how is that going to change our neighborhood and its safety? What will it do to our home values, and what people are you encouraging to move into these townhomes? Second, the article stated that it would be ideal for traveling nurses and young professionals. Do the needs of young professionals and traveling nurses, who by definition are just passing through, supersede the needs of the people who already live in your city, who work in your city, who buy from your small businesses, send their kids to your school, and pay your taxes? Of the two of the biggest employers in Altoona, who I won't name, one has laid off hundreds of employees since 2019, and the other is resorting to bringing people from the outside into the city because of various reasons, one of the being fair wages and benefits. So I ask you, what are you, as city council members, doing to put pressure on local businesses and employers to attract people to live in the city and pay fair wages to be able to afford your town, high-end townhomes? The third thing I want to discuss is stormwater management. It's a huge concern. The city has taken initiative to replace the storm drains in our neighborhood, and we all appreciate it. It looks great. We do think it'll help. But do you really think cementing over Keith Athletic Field, what do you think that will do for stormwater management? If I lived downhill from Keith Athletic Field, I would have some serious concerns about where all that rainwater will go, and I can tell you that it will probably go into people's basements, and where will you be when that happens? I had some other things I'm going to skip saying, but I would just like to say that if you wouldn't consider putting it in your own neighborhoods, please don't consider putting it in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
That's fair. That's very fair.
Thank you, Katie. I just want to speak on this, though, since you all showed up tonight. You are right, it is owned by the school district, and there were early conversations with them about potentially transferring it or selling it to the Redevelopment Authority so that we could market it to a developer who would build townhouses there. Unfortunately, we never got to the point where we were able to work anything out with them, and we also never got to the point where, you are absolutely right, like transparency with a project like this was, is paramount. We never got to that point before it slipped out into the newspaper, you know, and I feel like a lot of the conversations that we were having with the school district, there was a lot of cloudiness and murkiness around that as well. So it was never really got to the point where, where we were in a position to buy it off of them. They are moving forward now with marketing it on their own and trying to sell it themselves to a private developer, so, you know, that's their prerogative. They own the building, and, you know, we can't do anything about that. So, yeah, I mean, as things stand right now, there's nothing going on with Keith Athletic Field between the district and the city. You're welcome.
Mayor, can I just follow up with that?
Of course.
Katie, thank you very much. You seem to be paying a lot of attention to what we're doing here. And just to make it clear, we're looking at every neighborhood in the city and how we can enhance the neighborhood, and at any point, we would not put anything in a neighborhood that is not going to enhance what's already there, okay? It's just not Keith Athletic Field. If you stick around for the meeting, we're going to be stacking up some properties to put into our land bank so that we can look for future development on things. So there's a lot of moving parts up here, and I appreciate the fact you're paying attention to all that, okay? So, thank you.
And the reality is, is what we're looking for, when you, when you look at the declining population in the city of Altoona, and keep in mind that that means that there's fewer paper, people to pay the bills, and that in the last 10 years, the percentage of people who are still living in the city below the federal poverty level has almost doubled, that increases the tax burden on the people who are living here in the city. We're looking for higher-end properties to attract people with an income to come into the city who are going to be contributors to the city, and that's what we're looking for, okay? So, and yes, we do look at that as, would I want that in my neighborhood, and we're cognizant of that. So, and I always know that when there's vacant property in a neighborhood, people are always going to be concerned about what's going to be happening there. But this is not a new issue. I mean, this goes back almost 20 years ago, when Dr. Murray was superintendent of the school district, and he started a discussion with Chris Kopack, who did Wolf Court, about developing that ground, and that, that went nowhere. But as Councilman Ellis had said, we are constantly looking for efforts where we can put some good housing into the city, housing that people want, people who work for a living, and are going to contribute to the tax base, and that benefits all of us, yourselves included. We're not looking to do something that's going to hurt a neighborhood.
I appreciate that.
So...
I appreciate you, you know, I know, talk, talk with some of you and know some of you a little bit better than others, but I appreciate you coming out this evening. We have had a variety of different conversations amongst ourselves, one-on-one, and I can say that I think we have a consistent effort here to try to build housing opportunities for working families to call Altoona home. We continue to see an increasing, obviously, not only an aging population, but we have, we have less people living here and staying here. And at some point in time, I mean, that, that mid-to-upper end housing opportunity is, is very small. That window is very small, particularly in the city of Altoona. So I just wanted to, I guess, echo my, my peers' comments here this evening. Thank you.
Southern Alaganes and ABC did a housing study, and the one portion that we're missing in Altoona is good quality, new housing, in ranch homes, you know, homes that people want to live in. And any lot that we have available in the city that we could get housing on, that's what we want to do. And I do live in Fairview, so, yeah, that would be close to my home as well. So, you know, I think that, as Bruce said, people have to realize that we have to have a steady income base for the city to pay fire, police, roads, all the expenses, or you have to find that money somewhere else. And so, the housing stock in Altoona is our biggest asset, and that's where we're trying to put most of our effort into.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Nice to see you again. Congratulations on your new term as mayor, and nice to meet a new council member. My name is Jordan Sesame Wild, and I'm an ecological landscaper with a nonprofit and a local business. I'm here to speak on a few things. The first I would like to talk about is near Ron's house on Fourth Street and 25th Avenue, that intersection at the rain garden in Fairview of Holy Trinity. Right by that stop sign, going up the hill towards the mountain on Fourth Street, there's a tree there, and a lot of people have stopped while I've been working there the past couple weeks with concerns about that being a safety hazard. So, I don't know if anybody's came and complained or called the offices or anything about that, but I just wanted to let y'all know that we're going to take the tree and put it in a different spot, because I understand that it's a safety hazard too, and I don't want what we're doing ecologically in the city to ruin, like, for people to complain about it so much that people don't want it anymore. And I didn't plant that there, just so you'll know. I, I've been very observant with my plantings, and I spend countless hours, and I'm obsessed with my job, and, yeah, and that, that leads me on to wanting to speak about the ABD, A B C D Corp annual meeting that was held at the Blair County Conservation Center with Nathan Rayner. His passion that you've all, you've all seen and you all witnessed when you went, that's, that's like, his role is where I want my role to be, but in our community. And I really am, am looking to be used by the city, and I have a lot of grant money coming from contracting with the DCNR and working with the Conservation District. So, I just, I just want y'all to keep me in mind for whenever there's situations where if there was housing to go at Keith Athletic Field, that I could, you know, turn, put a rain garden at the bottom, or put wild flower meadows on the slopes, and it would be paid for by the state, and then there would be less mowing. So if there's any spaces where, you know, there's stormwater runoff, that's a serious issue, or you just don't want to continue to cut the grass in these spaces, and although they are green spaces, if they're just lawn, then we could really enhance those and make them educational. I had the privilege to plant with the fifth graders of Holy Trinity at that rain garden again. I did last year when they were fourth graders, and a couple of them came back, especially this one boy, telling me all the Latin names of every native plant, and saying that his mom is so annoyed with him, and she was happy that he came to me to talk with me about it. And it was really endearing to see that, and that's not really taught in public schools, ecology, as far, well, whenever I was in school, I'm 31 now, but we didn't learn much about that. So I feel like I could play a niche in our community and be like Nathan Rayner, where I, I helped create a whole new, a whole new category of jobs surrounding ecology, and create these food forests. Like, you'll get to see it as the plants grow in Fairview. I planted five plum trees, three pawpaws, blueberries, raspberries, and a lot of medicinal plants, too. So with these plants serving the purpose of stormwater, you know, filtration and soaking up the water, they're also edible, and we're going to put signs and have it be very educational. So, just call on me, because I'm very passionate. You can ask my girlfriend. I work seven days a week until the winter, and I'm obsessed with it, and I, I love this, and I love doing it in the community that I grew up in. So thanks for everything that you guys do, and I'm proud to be here. Thank you.
Hey, Jordan, I just wanted, I just wanted to tell you, you have done a remarkable job over there.
Thank you.
That looks far better than it did when they put it in.
Yeah, and it's, over time, it takes a while, but it's going to fill in, it's going to grow. Like, I planted plants that, you know, bloom from spring all the way to fall, and color complements, and, you know, certain plants that like wet soil, certain plants that like dry soil, and I'm very, like, I think about it a lot, and I, I can see, yeah, I just want to educate the youth on it, too.
Thank you.
Jordan, thank, thank you very much. I think what you're doing back there is wonderful, right? And I, I don't mean this to be funny or anything, but...
That's okay.
I'm, I'm very happy that you have the sense to realize when a tree is going to obstruct traffic, because we have planners in the city that don't understand that.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah, yeah. It's, that's, I don't want to, I don't want anything to happen to cause people to not want what I'm doing. And, like I said, I didn't plant that there, and I want to take it out because people are talking to me. So many people drive through there constantly and stop and say thanks, or complain about that, or, it's, it's, it's a nice little island in the, the busy traffic, and I enjoy it.
We, we used to have planting issues. We're okay now. But, but what you're doing is really, and what I mean by we're okay now is the people we do have on staff, like Diane, are very conscientious of that, so I didn't want to see anybody get, you know, thrown under the bus there or something. But I appreciate what you're doing, and another thing you mentioned was stormwater.
Yeah.
And so what you are doing is actually helping the stormwater issue also. And, and communities like ours, there weren't really rules or the foresight to worry about stormwater up until the late 60s, early 70s, and then they slowly are, you know, caught up.
Yeah.
And so we're stuck playing catch-up.
Yeah.
So we have all this development where stormwater wasn't properly paid attention to, and so now we have to make sure that anytime we develop anything, all of that is taken into account, and, and planting, and having the right species there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we royally messed up back in the day, because everybody, well, back in the day, Mr. Wissinger donated a bunch of Norway maples, which was great in the 80s, but when they grew up, 50 years later, you have all these gigantic Norway maples and...
That was from Gables.
The what?
Those were from Gables.
Oh, Gables, too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, the lot where the rain garden is, there used to be a house on that.
Yeah.
But I remember it, too.
Yeah, and so, so we're moving in the right direction. We just got a lot of catch-up to play here, but I'm glad you're a part of the solution.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been, it's felt, felt really good to be embraced by the community with my passion, and it just keeps me going even more. We made the front page of the newspaper, and that was really cool. And I know firsthand, I, I grew up in the clock development by Ebner Elementary School, and all of our basements flood, and because it's right underneath the reservoir. And my dad told me that if that wasn't built at the time, like, if that was built now, that it wouldn't pass, like...
Well, it's all floodplain out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That, that's a whole other issue that I deal with on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you, particularly with the school kids.
Yeah.
That's the answer. Thank you very much.
I love it. I would hope to have, like, a garden at every elementary school and
That'd be great.
high school, like, every neighborhood, and then to have the Greenway bicycle trails go to every, every ecological planning, whether it's a rain garden or a meadow. And, yeah, it's, it's a great way to cut down on mowing.
Thank you.
Maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Devon Saylor, 424 Crawford Avenue. So I just came up here to address something that, you know, and, and, you know, hearing these guys talk from, you know, about Keith Athletic Field, it kind of ties into something that I, I wanted to speak on, which is, you know, transparency and govern, and, you know, we're all public servants here, every single one of us. But I feel like there are times where, just by sheer layout of how we have our meetings, conduct our meetings, where they're held. I mean, for instance, the, the Housing Authority, Altoona Housing Authority meetings, they happen essentially in a closet. You know, I went in to sit down at one of the meetings, which Bruce came too late.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, right. Well, that wasn't, well, that wasn't your fault, because you called in. But, and that's, and that's part of that, too. But, you know, and if I were somebody who wanted to know what the Altoona Housing Authority was doing, or what's going on, or what have you, I mean, I'd be walking up to a counter, which is what I did, said, hey, where's the Housing Authority meeting at? And they'd say, oh, and they had to show me back this hallway, back this door, you know, and to me, if I'm a member of the public and I have a concern or I want to learn something, not only that, there's no materials that would be provided to me. So they're talking about ordinances and stuff like that in real time, that there's no way I could check, or look at, or anything else, nor would even have the knowledge to even ask any questions. Now, for me, of course, there was no direct concern, but, you know, we talked about this, the Planning Commission meeting earlier this, or, yeah, this week, the last week, where we talked about the seating, because people have complained about it being, like, hard to hear. There have been times where I've gone in and people have asked me for an agenda, because we don't have agendas available for people of the public that might have a concern, you know? And I, I'm not up here to, you know, lead any dunks or anything on anybody, or any staff, or, you know, stuff like that, but I think it, and it goes back to, you know, what Katie had said about Keith Field, and, you know, the idea of transparency and knowing, having the ability to know and participate. I think that we want to make that, we want to make Altoona City Government a place where we can participate, you know? And Matt, you know, I, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus here, but, you know, the statement was, that you made was, we let that slip into the paper. You know, it slipped into the paper. But what if the discussions were had, the requirements were met, and then you guys did get Keith Field, and then you did have the opportunity to put that development there? Would that be something you guys would do? I don't know. But I will say that personally, you know, I, I think that we're all public servants here. I think that we're all trying to serve the public, and I think that we, there's practices and things that we could be doing, small things, tiny things, incremental things, whether that's, you know, changing meeting venues, or having the, I don't know, talking about things, like knocking on people's doors, not just to ask for a letter of support, but rather for what's your thoughts? What are you, how, what are your feelings towards this? Because you might know very well that nobody's going to feel too great about it, but I remember the same story kind of playing out with the rezoning on Kettle that took place, oh heck, back in April, May, you know? Because I remember discussions were had about that the whole way back in February. No one heard, like, no one, I talked to people in that neighborhood, none of them had known until the orange signs came down the yard saying, hey, we're rezoning. And then there was a public hearing that was had, and a lot of the people just felt like, they came in, they said what they wanted to say, and it was rezoned anyway, you know? And I would encourage us to figure out ways to be more inclusive or proactive in a way. I think that's the term I'm looking for, proactive in how we do governing here at the, at the city. And I know the Planning Commission, you know, throughout the state municipalities' planning code, it has the ability to host public hearings and stuff like that. Maybe that's something that can be explored more. I just say all those things because, you know, I do want a good, I want a more connected community, and I see people like Jordan who love a guy to death because he does step up, and he comes here to share that, you know, he wants to be part of the solution. And I feel, me personally, I've done that as well, you know, as I've talked to many of you guys privately, one-on-one, or, you know, as a group, you know, like, I'm trying to find solutions. So, that being said, that's, that's all I wanted to say, and if anybody has anything they would like to say, go for it.
I thank you for your comments, sir. I, I'm sorry. I chair the Housing Authority, and I remember you attending our last meeting. We, we meet the second Wednesday of every month at 8:30. You're more than welcome to come. The, the meeting room is the, the room for, for the board members to meet, and unfortunately, the day you were there, I know there were a lot of boxes that made it look like a closet, but we're just now going to start the audit. So that's all the paperwork that the auditors need to complete their job. The meetings are, are published, and as I said, you can attend, you know, you don't have to come in and ask. You can come in and join us and ask any question you may have.
Right.
And I'll, I'll check on the minutes, or the, and the agenda, to make sure that they're readily available to you when you do want to attend a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, that, I don't think that's my concern. I think as a general, like, I'm saying a general member of the public, right? And I was using closet as hyperbole, obviously, I know it's not a closet, but, you know, it's a very small room, you know, like, public meetings, I feel like should be held in rooms like this one, you know? If, if it's available to the public, you want the ability, or, I don't know, a place where it feels like people would be able to come into that room and feel as though it was, you know, it feels like I'm, I had to, like, knock on a door, talk to somebody, they'd, like, let me in, you know? And we don't have that for any other meeting. I know Planning Commission meet up on the fourth floor, but even that, that's, you know, three stories you got to go up. If you're a member of the public, know where that's at, just to sit down and share your opinion, although it's a good, or your, your grievance, but it is a good room, you know? I just, that's just a thought that I have of something that could be changed.
Well, thank you for your input, and please join us. Every other Wednesday, or every second Wednesday, 8:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I believe all the meetings, AltoonaPA.gov and the calendar icon up there, and then when that calendar drops down, times and locations of all the meetings are on there.
Right. I mean, I don't think that's the, the point I was really getting to. I mean, I realize that they're all advertised, and I realize that they're all available for people to go and look, but like, say, okay, Mitch, right, 8:30 Tuesday, right?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. See, look, I already forgot. But I did, I mean, I knew where it was, because I did, I looked up the calendar, and I found where it was at. But I'm saying that a person who's coming in there, maybe who just, like, they're nervous, they have a question, they have a grievance, you walk into the Altoona Housing Authority, you're looking around, you're like, well, where's the, where's the meeting at, you know? And I, someone might even think to ask, like, well, you know, to knock and say, oh, maybe it's not here, maybe it's not today, you know? And the, the policy decisions that could be made there could be the difference between somebody, the, the policy decisions there could be the difference between somebody, you know, losing, making money, although I know that a lot of the regulations were there to meet a, a federal or state, was it a federal or state requirement now?
It's federal.
All right. Well, I don't want to bog down the meeting any more than I already have, but, you know, that was just my point. It's small things, I think, could be, like, having the agendas more readily available, thinking about where we have the public meetings and so on.
Well, we'll certainly take your suggestions, and, and if you could come to the next meeting next month and share your concerns, we'd appreciate it.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close the floor and move on to the resolutions. Linda?
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. Item B is approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding between the city of Altoona and the Altoona Redevelopment Authority of Alto, the Altoona Redevelopment Authority, Redevelopment Authority of Altoona for rehabilitation and construction... for rehabilitation and construction management services as outlined in the agreement and further authorizing the, uh, city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item C is authorizing a right-of-way agreement between the city and First Light Fiber for construction, installation, maintenance and operation of telecommunications facilities within the city's rights of way as defined in the agreement for the purpose of providing telecommunications services and/or information service as defined in the agreement and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item D is approving the purchase of a walk-in cooler freezer evidence storage locker for the Altoona Police Department addition renovation project in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents payable from ARPA funds and further authorizing the city manager to execute the contract and the city clerk to attest to same. Item E is authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Financing Authority for the PA LSA statewide grant for fire and rescue equipment, further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is authorizing reimbursement by the City of Altoona to the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of five thousand dollars for property located at eighteen seventeen to nineteen Eighth Avenue to be used to further remove conditions of slum and blight under the city's CDVG blighted property demolition program. Item G is awarding a demolition contract to G and R Excavating and Demolition of Tyrone for demolition of seven oh nine North Ninth Avenue in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars payable from CDVG funds and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item H is awarding a demolition contract to Earth, contract to Earth Movers Unlimited of Kyler Town, PA for demolition of fifteen fourteen eighteenth Avenue in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and the garage only at six oh nine Fifth Avenue in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a total amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars payable from CDVG funds and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item I is approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred dollars submitted by Kenneth Nysley of Holidaysburg for property located at thirty-three twenty-four to twenty-six Sixth Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. The next one, two, three, four are all for Randy Folkler of nineteen eighteen Fifth Avenue. Um, approving a repository bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars for property located at three twenty-seven to twenty-nine Wapsenonick Avenue. Approving a pro, a repository property of, of, in the amount of twenty-five dollars for property located at three thirty-one to thirty-three Wapsenonick Avenue. The next one is approving a repository bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars for property located at two oh eight to ten East Cherry Avenue and also approving a repository bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars for property located at four seventeen nineteen South Eighth Street. All are in further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Are there any additions, anything that needs to be pulled for separate vote?
Linda, I'd like to pull J, K, L and M for a separate vote.
Okay.
Linda, um, I, I didn't notice this when the agenda went out. Um, but item F, which has to do with the five thousand dollar payment, I just wanted to make a clarification that the purpose is to remove the end-use requirement because we already removed the conditions of slum and blight about fifteen years ago when we tore down a bar on that property. Yeah. Um, but because the cost was pretty high, we, um, needed to, uh, repay the, uh, market value in order to remove any restrictions on the reuse of that property. So that's the purpose of repaying from city funds to the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you. I have the long version with, that'll have to be changed then through your depart, they get, this is what I was given. So I just need, we just need to change the long version of the resolution.
Does that mean we have to table F till next time, or what do we do?
There's really no hurry, so we could wait if you would like to pull it, table it.
Well, I mean, if it's good to go now, it's good to go now. Do we need, is there any reason to have public comment or anything?
Saying you need that additional clarification and the resolution's approved.
Well, it, the purpose is not to remove slum and blight because it's a level lot.
I pull it, I, I, I would table it.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, so we'll pull F, J, K, L and M.
Okay, well, I think first what we need is she wants to table F.
I'll make a motion to table F.
Second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mayor Pacifico to table F and a second by Councilman Kelly. Call for the vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ickus?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pacifico?
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero to table F. And then we have items J. J, K, L and M. Which I have to do all separately. And we're just gonna, you're just pulling those for separate vote, correct?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay. Okay, I'm going to take the consent vote first on items A through, through I.
Minus F.
Minus, yeah, forget it. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, let's see. So I need to take F off of here, table. All right, A through E, G, H and I, okay? That's the consent vote. Does that make sense? Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ickus?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
And the consent vote passes seven to zero. So that is A, B and J. Now, we're going back to. Now we're going to J. We're going to item J. Approving a repository bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars submitted by Randy Folkler of nineteen eighteen Fifth Avenue for property located at three twenty-seven to twenty-nine Wapsenonick Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Cooper?
No.
Ellis?
No.
Ickus?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item K, approving a repository bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars submitted by Randy Folkler of nineteen eighteen Fifth Avenue for property located at three thirty-one to thirty-three Wapsenonick Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Cooper?
No.
Ellis?
No.
Ickus?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item L, approving a repository bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars submitted by Randy Folkler of nineteen eighteen Fifth Avenue for property located at two oh eight to ten East Cherry Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Cooper?
No.
Ellis?
No.
Ickus?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item M, approving a repository bid in the amount of twenty-five dollars submitted by Randy Folkler of nineteen eighteen Fifth Avenue for property located at four seventeen to nineteen South Eighth Street and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Butterbaugh?
No.
Cooper?
No.
Ellis?
No.
Ickus?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. Now we have two ordinances on the agenda. Okay, let me slide down. Okay, I'm going to read the first ordinance for introduction, which is an ordinance of the City of Altoona and the County of Blair, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government hereinafter set forth during the year twenty twenty-four, known as the twenty twenty-four budget ordinance.
The document that you all have in front of you, um, is the actual general fund budget, the capital budget, which we reviewed, and the highway aid budget, which is the very last page here. The only thing that has changed since my review, uh, at the last meeting is that the redevelopment authority actually needs money to operate on. They, they have, they have money, um, you know, from what we've, uh, set aside from ARPA for certain purposes, but those are not being, are not scheduled to be used for, uh, administrative purposes. Um, they, they really need some money to operate on. So I've taken fifty thousand dollars out of a contingency line item that was here and moved it into a new item, which is a transfer to the redevelopment authority. So I just want you all to be aware of that. Um, and there's an additional, uh, revenue item for real estate taxes that's in here and that shows up in the budget as well. Just for clarity.
Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance? This ordinance is introduced by Councilman Ellis. We also have another ordinance on the agenda for introduction, which is an ordinance of the City of Altoona, County of Blair, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, mending chapter six forty-six entitled taxation and in particular, six forty-six dash ninety-six, millage established, ongoing tax, establishing the tax rate for the real estate subject to taxation located in the City of Altoona at a rate of five point six two nine mils for the year twenty twenty-four and continuing thereafter without reenactment until said rate is changed by city council. The ordinance is, also provides for reaffirmation of the remainder of chapter six forty-six, repeal of all ordinances or parts of laws in conflict therewith, severability of provisions and an effective date. This is known as the twenty twenty-four tax millage ordinance. Is there a motion, or is our councilman willing to introduce this ordinance? This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Ellis.
Okay, so moving on to city manager updates, Omar.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of really updates on things I've, I've brought up in the past here with, with council, either through direct contact or through the, uh, manager's informational memo. Uh, Platinum Parking, uh, who was at a, at the most recent, um, parking authority meeting, is coming back to provide a presentation on their thoughts regarding parking in the downtown of Altoona. Uh, they are going to make a presentation to the, uh, Parking Authority Board tomorrow morning in the common room of City Hall. Uh, just wanted to pass that along to council. Um, and then the other update I have is relates to, uh, the CZB representatives that will be in town at the time of the next council meeting, December the fourth. Uh, they'll be providing a document for your review in, in front of that meeting, in advance of that meeting. Uh, they also would like to meet with individual or small groups of council members to get a better, better insight into what your thoughts are, um, you know, about a variety of issues that relate to the comprehensive plan. And so I will be reaching out to each of you to schedule a time, uh, at that time. It's, again, those are just updates to what I've already put out there in some form or fashion before, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Omar. Any questions for Omar? Moving on to council discussion, Councilman Kelly.
Nothing to offer tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Cooper?
I'd just like to congratulate Councilman Ickus on his reelection and Councilwoman-elect, uh, Chale Clintich, on your successful election. Uh, I, I'm confident you're going to make a wonderful member of this council. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Councilman Butterbaugh?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman Ickus?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I, I missed you.
I'm sorry.
Congratulations.
Did you say nothing?
Uh, nothing tonight. I'll wait till questions from the media, I'm sure.
Councilman Ellis?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Beatty?
I have nothing.
All right, uh, Bill, questions from the media? Your time to shine.
Thank you. Well, I see that there's a half mil tax increase that was approved. Could somebody or everybody tell me why that happened?
Hasn't been approved. It won't be approved.
Well, approved as a part of the tentative budget, yeah.
Bill, we, we have a certain level of services that we have to provide to people of Altoona. And we are dangerously close to having those services be at the lowest level they could possibly be and still be effective. And looking forward, uh, I know you were, you were at the last, uh, meeting where we discussed the budget. And the city manager pointed out that about a mil, a little over a million dollars going to restructure post-COVID, uh, positions is going to go away next year. So we have to be planning ahead to be able to deal with those, uh, with that, that lack of a million dollars for, uh, to keep our services where they are right now.
Phil, I would add to, uh, Councilman Ellis's comments and assessment. Um, not only are we looking to get ahead of those, those positions that have been filled and kind of the whole story on that goes back to probably the twenty twenty-one budget, okay? Where, um, some, there was some restructuring that took place in city, in, in municipal government. In addition to that, we have, um, an obligation and a responsibility to fully pay for the contracts that we have in place, um, for our, our, our city employees. And I think it's no secret, at least according to the budget, that personnel costs are, are a, a human resource reality for, uh, the services that we have to provide, whether it's police, fire, public works, code enforcement, community development, engineering, et cetera. So the, the most unresponsible thing we could do is to continue go without fully paying our bills. And as long as I'm someone that's, that's representing the city, I'm not going to participate in, in passing, um, passing a cost down the road that we need to take care of.
If I could just add a word to Councilman Ickus, I'll go back to what I said at our previous meeting, Bill. Uh, we go back forty years when federal revenue sharing was, uh, you know, pot of money for municipalities and it went away. And we had some pretty hefty layoffs of police officers, firefighters and other, uh, staff. And it would be, uh, just plain common sense to look forward to after next year to, uh, maintain the services. And this city is not bloated with a bunch of extra staff. Uh, I, I'm satisfied, uh, that we have at least the minimum. We could certainly use more fire and police officers, uh, but we need to plan on what to do when those ARPA funds are dried up.
Well, Bill, this goes back to raising revenue, you know, looking at every possible property in the city and looking at getting it, or maintaining it on the tax rolls or adding to the tax roll. You know, with Jeff Long's building going on the tax rolls this year, that helps. But every building that we put on lessens the burden on the people that are already paying their taxes. So you have to find that balance.
Anyone else? The, the, the ballot, or the proposed budget that Omar presented in October was, was balanced. But next year it was not going to be balanced based on the ARPA funds going away. Is it, is my understanding correct that you kind of wanted to get ahead of that to get some money in the bank to?
Yes, I think that's the responsible thing to do, Bill, is to get ahead of these projected shortfalls. Yes, I think that's the responsible thing to do, Bill, is to get ahead of these projected shortfalls. And as Councilman Ickes pointed out, not only do we have a shortfall of a million some dollars already in the budget, but we have contracts to pay for, for all three of the city's unions, which are gonna be increasing over the life of those contracts.
What about next year? With a million, I'm not a, I'm not great at math, but this amount that's gonna be raised, how, how far will that go towards helping to replace the ARPA money?
Pretty close. It'll be pretty close.
Really?
Yeah.
Like, how much will, well, that, and that gets to some specific questions I was gonna ask.
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, we don't, we won't know the actual numbers until the entire year thereafter once we have audited numbers, but we are ballparking, Omar, this will be approximately a million dollars?
Yeah, so right now in the budget for introduction and in the budget that we reviewed at the last work session, there was a million and $58,000 identified for positions, for wages and benefits for positions that were reconstituted, basically had been done away with and now were reconstituted after 2021, basically after the pandemic sat in.
That, that's 1.058 million? Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, that is, that is the 2024 value of those, of those positions. The 2025 value, which I believe you're talking about next year, meaning beyond next year, will be, will be higher than that, certainly.
But what I meant also was, what is, how much money will the increase generate?
Just over a million dollars.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I know it, okay. So once that's in place, theoretically, you're kinda caught up for irrespective of the ARPA money that's gonna pay for 2024?
Things are always changing in municipal government, Bill. Phil, you know, the one thing that you have to understand is, you know, as everything goes right now, you know, the contracts every year go up, the cost of fuel, all the expenses of running the government have increased. The cars, the trucks, the fire trucks, just any equipment we buy has increased dramatically in price, just as our home, you know, anything that we use at home has increased. So this is just a way of keeping up with the added expenses that are in the economy that we're in.
Okay. How did, how did that discussion happen between the October presentation by Omar and this meeting?
Well, I think if, I think if memory serves me correctly, if you go back a year from last year, there were discussions regarding concerns of us being behind the eight ball, having to make good on obligations, contracts, and, and potential replacement of ARPA dollars that would eventually be going away, okay? So this has been something that, yes, the budget balances, but there were, as presented, and this isn't the, the fault of anyone per se, but we knew, and Omar has said it for two years now, that there were structural deficits in those budgets that were presented. So the, the worst thing we could do is continue to act like there's no item that needs addressed here, right? Because that, that will only continue to compound down the road. I mean, I hate to be, try to be a historian here, but you know, for, for 40 years, revenues were pretty, were, were flat in city and county government, right? So the folks that lived where I live right now paid for all three, you know, paid, paid under a certain dollar amount for all those years that they lived there, and it was nowhere close to market value based off of what the home was assessed for. I mean, it's impossible to try to maintain adequate police, fire, public works services for our community based off of tax assessed values from 58 years ago at, at that point in time. Another aspect I'll point out, and I know I'm pontificating here, Mayor, but I told you I'd save my comments, so here we go. Of the three taxing bodies, this form of government has been the only form of government that we are the last ones to, to do another tax increase since reassessment. That is a fair and true statement, okay? So this isn't something that, you know, we, you know, we get, we get no gratitude or enjoyment coming to have these types of conversations, right? But we, we do come with economic reality. We have to pay bills. Well, I think, Bill, I think the one thing that Omar has been working on is a five and 10-year projection out. And I don't know that this has ever been done by council before, is that we're trying to look ahead to see what the costs are and what the contracts would look like, you know, the expenses that we have to pay. And I think it's, bodes well, I think the county's looking at it. I think government in general has to start looking out a little further than year to year. So you have to get ahead of it so that you don't get behind it relatively quickly.
Phil, I think if, if you have the recall, and I, I know I do, and some of my colleagues do, but a year ago when we were discussing the budget for 2023, we pretty much came to the conclusion that this needed to be done, but because people were still coming out of the struggles from, from 2020 and 2021, we would let this go to the, to the next year. That's where we're at. We're, we're the place where we're caught and we have to do it, so.
What I, what I meant with the last question actually is like how it transpired? Did, did, did individual council members get a hold of Omar and say, hey, this doesn't look like it's gonna work? Or like?
Yeah, so Bill, I put out an email with the value of the proposed tax increase and then got feedback from individual council members.
Oh, so you proposed it yourself?
Well, no, I mean, I, I provided it for, for feedback from individual.
You mean as a, as a possibility?
Yes.
Okay.
What we were discussing at the last meeting was the tentative budget.
Right.
You know, so we had to look at all the numbers and...
Okay, and now, Omar, can you say what the median assessed value is and how much money that will mean extra? Okay, well, I need to, I'll have to calculate it myself tonight then, so.
A, a house assessed at $100,000, okay? Which I would bet that the average house in Altoona is probably not assessed at $100,000, okay? It's prob, it's probably under that. At $100,000, you're looking at $50 a year. Okay? That's the increase.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, I, I could.
I got your back, Bill. No problem.
Thanks, appreciate that. Let me see here. What is the significance of the memorandum of understanding with the RA? I think it's one of the early...
This is basically just an agreement saying that the city will provide housing rehab services for the RA on properties they acquire to prevent them from having to go into demolition to preserve the tax base. So it's just formalizing, formalizing help from the city with RA.
You mean in keeping with what's been discussed for months now about the?
Right, I mean, we're, we're getting close to having some properties. So now we just need to assure the RA that they went out on the limb to get those properties that we, that we can provide staff to them to manage the rehabilitation of those properties.
So, so what would involve staff time to work with developers to?
Right, we'll probably initially actually manage the construction of the projects, fit it out, manage the construction.
What particular department would be in charge of that? The RA itself?
Well, it's RA and the Community Development Department, so the staffing would be out of the Community Development Department.
Okay. What is, I guess this is for Adam, what is the amount of the LSA grant application for the fire equipment?
Almost 163,000.
Does that have a match requirement?
No.
And what, what equipment is it?
Uh, there's some battery-powered positive pressure fans for ventilating structures, forcible entry tools, a set of battery-powered vehicle rescue tools, rescue airbags, confined space rescue equipment, and trench shoring for trench rescue.
Confined space rescue equipment?
Yes.
And then what's the last one?
Uh, trench shoring for trench rescue. It's basically replacing equipment that we already have. It's gonna be at its end of life at some point.
Okay, thanks. Why, why was the Foklers bids, or I guess his name's Randy Fokler? Why were all his bids denied since he's a local person?
We're trying to get all the properties together and maybe transfer them into the RA that are buildable. So that's really what we're trying to do right now, is get, get a catalog, get a catalog of properties that we can have developers look at. So we prefer most of them go into the redevelopment authority.
Are these vacant lots?
Yes.
Are they all like contiguous?
No.
Oh, okay. Or some of them, or are they all spread around?
Two of them are. Two of them are contiguous. But the other two are scattered.
Okay. A couple other budget questions, Omar. What is the, and I always have trouble with this terminology, but what is the unassigned fund balance? Like the cushion in the, in the budget?
You talking about the budget or the, the audit?
The, the budget.
Yeah, it's about a million dollars.
Oh, okay. You mean that's, that's like extra money in the bank because of this additional?
So, so what, what we have, Bill, is we have, we're gonna have a fiscal cliff at the end of 2024 where the things that are being paid through ARPA funds, the money goes away.
You mean at the end of 2025? Oh, no, Tom, sorry, yeah.
At the end of 2024. So the idea is that this money will be used in the future to fund positions and the services that those positions provide going forward, yeah.
Okay, so this is like extra money that's gonna sit in the bank basically until the beginning of 2024? Okay, gotcha. And then, that's all, that's all. Thank you.
I'm confused. How, this is not sitting in a bank. This isn't like, this isn't magic. We have revenues come in, we have revenues go out for expenditures for personnel. So it's not like the city's, you know, yeah. Basically, what you're doing is you're, instead of going out and borrowing it at 2025, you're just getting ahead of it so that your, your resources are coming in before you need it.
So by the end of next year, it should be available?
Yeah, we should have, we'll be able to pay our bills, yeah. Remember how back in the day we used to have the TANS, the tax anticipation notes? We don't need those anymore.
So the idea is, Bill, yeah, I mean, it sits in a budget and a line item, but it doesn't, the money comes in throughout the year, so it's not like right there.
Right, yeah, I, I get it.
And we're not paying interest because we don't have a TAN.
That, that really is the key, Bill, you know, years, as, as I've lived in the city all my life, I remember the tax anticipation notes, and I remember borrowing money to buy police cars. You're borrowing it for 10 years and the cars only lasted for five. So like, those are the type of things that we're trying to get away from, just in the same way that the county is trying to get ahead of some of the expenses on the courthouse whenever it was left go for a very long time. So it's just being more responsible and looking at it from a, you, you pay money to borrow money, of course. If you anticipate it and you get the money in, in advance, then you're not wasting the money that you pay in interest. So it's basically trying to balance it ahead of time.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. You all done? Meeting is adjourned.